Call the meeting to order and welcome everyone. Nice to see we have a good audience and ready to proceed with our board workshop. Mr. Superintendent, I will just, we're going to do the pledge and the treasure hunter and then I'll turn it right over to you. You can stand with me please for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
And the treasure hunter pledge?
As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
Thank you. You may be seated. Mr. Superintendent, I'll turn it to you.
All right. Good afternoon, board members. Good to see everybody. I hope nobody got rained on. We had a little bit of wet weather earlier today and I think we still have it now. But the primary thing on our agenda today is to go through what we're calling Phase One of our proximity zone initiative. And this is really focuses on the high school. And Legacy High School opens in August of 2025. So today, Dr. Wild is going to have a pretty detailed presentation for you. I have asked her to go slow because there's a lot there. And not just that, I'd also welcome and invite any board member if you have any questions in the coming weeks. Nothing is being decided right now. It's more just, you know, input from board members, some things to consider and think about, and we always invite you, if you'd like a more, have any questions, we'd be happy to meet with you after the fact and try to provide as many answers as possible. So I'm going to invite Dr. Wild to come to the podium. This is going to be interactive, not to the podium, because she's actually going to be pointing out some things on maps. And I also want to thank Dr. Wild and Mr. O'Leary, who've really led the work on this. They've had many, many, many meetings for a year, almost. Yeah. So, and actually, they've kind of briefed me along the way, but I do think that we're ready to present this to the board. We have an idea based on conversations I've had also with, with board members and what our priorities are. And Dr. Wild, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Prince. Good afternoon, board members and chair. We're going to go through a lot of details today, and like Dr. Prince said, decisions will be made at this meeting. In today's presentation, we're going to remind everybody about the intent of the proximity project. We're going to provide an overview of the process and some of the findings that we've had so far. We're going to share some recommendations as it relates to this, and we're going to discuss some decision points that have to be made in the very near future. Just a reminder of this awesome team that has been working on this project. And within this team, we have a subcommittee that has been meeting regularly. I'll talk about that in just a minute, but these are all the folks who have some role in this process, and that will increase as we move forward. Reminder of the reason for the project. First of all, I presented to you in October of 2023 about moving forward with this project. And what we're looking to do is change our current control choice plan to a proximity zoning plan. And the difference is with controlled choice, you have more choices within a larger geographical area. With proximity zones, we would have choices, but they would be closer to the child's home, which is really a bigger issue than K8s than our high schools, and I'll explain that in just a second. Since we started controlled choice, we have had a lot of changes in our district. Our demographics have changed, our population has definitely changed in terms of density. We are also opening Legacy High School next fall and a new K8 the year after that. And whenever you open a new school, that does require either changing or reviewing, making modifications to your zone. I already talked about the difference between controlled choice and proximity zones. This work has also really enlightened us in terms of our building capacities and future construction needs. So we'll talk a little bit about that. And our goal is also to reduce our transportation footprint on the roads and in our cost. Also, our goal was to avoid impacting school diversity. We don't want these changes to have a major demographic impact on our schools. We have had the pleasure of working with our consultants, Davis Demographics and JTV, and they are listening to the call today in case we have technical questions. They have done a phenomenal job with us, studying our current zones, really learning our district, learning about our building capacities and so forth. A subcommittee of that larger group that I showed you a few minutes ago met with Davis Demographics every single week. This entire time, we have met weekly. The full committee has met periodically to stay informed and to review where we are and to give input. The next few slides are actually from Davis Demographics to describe to you the process they use whenever they go into a district. They have done this work nationwide, all over the country with different types of zoning and different types of school districts. Initially, they did a lot of work setting up mapping. They received data from the county and the city government. We had Nicole Ford working with them and making sure they were in touch with the right people, and they received all of that mapping data. They also had been working hard to learn all about our developments, all of the major developers that are in St. Lucie County that we saw when we did the bus tour. So they went around and spoke with all of those developers and got a really strong idea of their future goals. They analyzed our current and future demographic outlook with our student body data, and then they developed population forecasts for St. Lucie Public Schools by grade and by current attendance zone and potential future zones. This is just an example of the type of data they received. They did work with our ITS department and Terrance O'Leary to receive our student data going back four years. So they look at our demographics, they look at our trends, our mobility, and so forth. This is a model that shows you how they do their forecasting. They have datasets that they look at, which include birth rates, they look at current and historical student data from our students, they look at parcel data for developments, then they look at forecasting.
Birth factors, mobility factors, student yield factors that are coming out of these new homes. And then they look at the incoming kindergarten classes, all student cohorts, I'll show you an example of that, and planned residential development. And they use all of this to do their student forecast. It is very complicated work, and it was fascinating to watch them go through this This is one of the charts that they developed for us in looking at residential development by our current zones, our current red, green, and blue zones. And you can see here that in total, at the time when they gathered all this data, 28,034 units are in this forecast in the next 10 years. 16,000 of those expected to be built in the next five years. One-third are already under construction. So all that construction we see is only one-third of the forecasted residents. 68% of these are built as single-family detached homes, and 60% are in the red zone. You can see the key over here that matches these lines here to actually show you the numbers broken out by single-family detached homes, single-family attached homes, like villas, multifamily attached homes and apartments. So they really do a deep dive in this analysis.
Helen, can you just, I'm sorry, Dr. Wild, can you go back? I just want to make sure that we sit on some of these so the board has time to process. I want to take our time with this, just so there's an understanding with regards to, I kind of thought there would be actually more apartments being built because of the affordability, but almost all the construction that's going on are single-family homes, or the vast majority. And then Dr. Wild will build on that with regards to enrollment projections, but this is kind of starting, like to see the homes that are being built currently, what's under construction.
And you might want to go back and see a previous slide, and that is okay as well. Okay, breaking it down a little bit deeper, like Dr. Prince just said, in the blue zone over the next 10 years, 3,765 mixed unit types, excluding 55 and older, are in these counts. And that's the blue zone. You'll see a map with everything together. The green zone, 7,636 over the next 10 years. And the red zone, where 60% of the building has taken place, 16,663 mixed unit types. I mentioned how they look at the data, and one of the ways they look at the data is through cohorts. So you can see the red line through the middle here, that is following a projected kindergarten class from 2023 to 2033. And you can see that class, and maybe everybody in the audience can't see quite as well, you can see that kindergarten class at 2,822 in the year 2023 is 4,507 in the year 2033. So birth rates clearly only account for some of the growth. You can see the cohort grows as it goes through to 2033.
Helen, can you go back one more? And what factors go into, you know, you're starting out with 2,822 students, how does it get to 4,507 students?
Right. So these are residents. So this takes into account all of those units that, that we just showed you, all of the new housing, mobility, mobility rates and so forth. So it's not that the number of students moving in is negated by the number moving out. People are moving in faster than they're moving out. That's a mobility factor. Also, if you look historically, from, on the left-hand side here is 2021 with 39,250 student resident forecasts, pre-K through 12, all the way to 33, 34, 56,195. And we have looked at numbers like that before. And then over here in this smaller chart, they are broken down by grade band, pre-K through 5, 6 through 8, pre-K through 8, and 9 through 12. And this helps us a lot when we are looking at the number of school seats that we have available way into the future. I'm going to move on and talk about high school zones specifically. And the first thing that I wanted to make you aware of, and this is true pre-K through 8 as well, when we are looking at potential boundaries, so David and Cameron with MGT Davis Demographics, they learned our zoning model now, which schools are in which zone and so forth. When we're looking at potential changes, they, they look at several factors when they're first getting started. They break the map down into little, little tiny areas so they can move things around in planning. They look also at natural boundaries, canals, major roads, zip codes, things that are easy to communicate when you're trying to explain a zone to someone, maybe who moves into the community. How do you explain it? How do we communicate it on our website? How does Michelle Jerger talk to our parents about their choices? Then we also look at the building capacities within a geographical area, what we have, what future sites we may have and so forth, and the proximity of those homes to the schools that we would like to give them to choose. All of this is really a much bigger issue in K through 8 because we have so many more schools and it is zoned with more choices. Once we draw those lines and we look at potential lines, and I can tell you, week after week, we would move a line here, move it there, and look at the impact, we also looked at the number of students impacted. If we were to make these changes, how many students would have to move from their current school to a new school? That's a consideration. We want to make good choices that'll take us far into the future with as little impact as possible to our students. And then we also look to make sure that we didn't unintentionally or intentionally make any demographic changes. We weren't looking to change the diversity within our schools. So we also looked at that with any planned changes. So the difference in high school is that each zone has one high school in the zip code, and then we have other choice options in high school. Career programs, magnet schools, attractor programs, controlled open enrollment. So there's a lot of ways for students to go to other schools, but their attendance zone, each zone has one high school. After doing all this work, we do have a recommendation that you would consider at future board meeting for a new zone for Legacy High School. That's the most imminent need is the opening of Legacy High School. We also have recommendations for modifying some of our existing zone boundaries to address capacity issues that we are seeing right now, where we, we don't have enough room at all of our schools, and based on projections into the future. So let me explain this matrix to you. This is our current existing five comprehensive high schools on the left. It's got the grade range and it's got the facility capacity. So school capacity, how many students is the school supposed to have or targeted to have based on the FISH reports? In the middle, under the yellow columns, are the number of residents. Those projections were residents expected to have students in the homes in the grade band 9 through 12, residents. And on the right side is the number and percentage enrolled. And the reason for that is because we do have choices. So if you look at, let's just start at Central. Central has 3,206 students enrolled. They are 130% over capacity. They are 130% of their capacities, which means they're overcrowded. That is a little under the number of residents they have because some students zoned for Central go to Lincoln Park, or they're at Dale Casson's or Performance Base. They are at some of our other choices. So that's how you read the difference between zoned residents and enrollment. So even if we just focus on enrollment right now, which is the most important factor, you will see that most of our schools are over capacity, overcrowded, or right at capacity, which means not enough room for growth. And this does not include charter schools. Or private schools. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to take a few minutes on the next couple of slides. These are key, key slides. On this slide, there's a couple of things to note. First, on the left, over the next 10 years, expecting 3,442 9 through 12 students with current projections. The black lines, well, it's color-coded as well, but the black dark lines show you our current boundaries for our high schools. So you can see the boundary up here around Westwood, it's currently green right now. On the next slide, the colors are going to change, and I'm going to ask you to notice something. So right now, just paying attention to those dark lines, you can see our boundaries, you can see the island splits right here, half Port St. Lucie, half Westwood. You can also see the projected growth within a zone as it's currently physically drawn out. So currently, the Port St. Lucie zone is expecting 1,200 of those students. Central 100, Treasure Coast 174. This is the densest area of the county in terms of a school population. Treasure Coast High School draws from the smallest area because it is so dense, and they're one of the schools that is most overcrowded, oddly. 1,400 expected over here because this is primarily the red zone. Okay. Now, this is a really important slide. I'm going to walk you through that. I'm going to ask that you start here and look at the key. Here, you can see the different colors that illustrate the different schools. We have left the current zone boundaries on this map with the dark line. They didn't change. So you see Centennial, this, that this whole area is Centennial currently. With the new projections, I'm going to start up at Westwood. Westwood is this purple-pinkish color. There is no change in our recommended boundaries for Westwood. Westwood is able to handle their capacity for quite some time, I'll show you that in the future. They're excited to be getting a brand-new building, and there was no logical change needed for Westwood. Fort Pierce Central experiences many changes. They pick up a section here, which is Indian River Estates, from Port St. Lucie High, and that is to make room for those 1,200 anticipated that I showed you at Port St. Lucie High. It's part of that. They, however, they lose a little section here to Centennial, and they lose a larger section here to Legacy, which we expected to see. We knew when we opened Legacy that it would take some students from Central. So it's taking this section here because Legacy is this peach section. Going down, Port St. Lucie High is losing this little section here, and I'll show you the number of students impacted in just a second. It's not very many. Then they stay the same except for this section here, which is the Harbor Ridge to Soro area. It looks like a big area, however, it's very few students currently. It is growing. Some of the students there do opt to go to Martin County. But part of the reason is because they're currently zoned for Port St. Lucie High, and they don't want to go that distance all the way back to Port St. Lucie High. So in looking at all of these factors, this recommendation opts to pull this segment here into Treasure Coast, but because Treasure Coast is so crowded, taking a little section of it here, because there's a very natural boundary, and move it into Centennial, and this section here, and move it to Legacy. So Treasure Coast becomes this bright orange, orange section. And then Centennial, which has this big geography currently, would be a much more concentrated zone, which does get to our proximity goals, and it's just this little yellow area here. And then Legacy is this big area here until we get to a future high school in, in the far-out future. So I'm going to let you look at that for a minute, and I'm going to show you some more slides that'll provide additional information to go along with this that might answer any questions that you're thinking right now. Want to look at it for a minute or?
Yeah.
Let them process for just a minute? Okay. I mentioned being able to describe the boundaries. It's never an easy task, but this is, with the current map that you just saw, these would be the zip codes and some of the main corridors that need to be called out for Michelle and her staff, Michelle Jerger and her staff in student assignment, to be able to explain it. And Michelle did take a close look at this, and she said, "This is easy, very easy for us to work with." So with that, I just put in here a map of each school zone and the zip codes, just so you could see it in a different way. So everything that was on that one master list is on a map here with the zip codes. Pretty large on this map. And I'm going to flip through these, so if there's any particular map you want me to stop at, please let me know. This is Fort Pierce Central's.
Does that bring the population of Fort Pierce Central down now?
A little bit. I'm going to show you all of that in just a second. I have a whole chart that'll show you out for the next 10 years. It does, yes. However...
Depends on who gets it off.
Depends on who gets it off. Okay. I'm going to, is it okay if I move? Okay. Fort Pierce Westwood, this one is not changed. Port St. Lucie High School, these are the boundaries and what the map looks like. This is Centennial. This one probably has the biggest physical change of any of the others. Treasure Coast High School, this is that area I mentioned of Tesoro and Harbor Ridge, and then it loses that little yellow area at the top. And then Legacy High School. And remember, Legacy High School will not have a senior class when it opens. This is a school that will grow very rapidly, but it will open with ninth, 10th, and 11th graders. That's how we do new, new high schools. Okay, to answer the question that Mr. Inglesall put forth was, what does the, what does this do to the population? So with our current projections, and spoiler alert, at the end, I'm going to tell you that we are going to continue the demographic study. So just so you know, this is based on current data. This will continue to be evaluated as we move forward. With this, though, you'll see the year that Legacy opens is when we do see those drops. The pink color, the salmon color there, that's a decline from one year to the next. So you see that the populations do come down, but this is also meant to deal with growth into the future. So there's geographical movements that are into this, and these are resident counts. When we go into the future, we're not talking about students currently in ninth through 12th grade, they'll be there in the future. So these are predictions. And then you'll see, if I can call your attention to something, the bright yellow is capacity of the current building. Some of these numbers are impacted by when we plan to build new schools, so I have to go into that in just a second. We're going to talk to you about new schools in just a minute. So these are projections, if we're able to do some of the expansions in new schools that we are projecting we need. So capacity's there. Here's what happens by 2033 if we do some things. And that is assuming all these other alternatives stay about the same size that they currently are. Of course, there's going to be assumptions when you're doing projections.
Why did we change the count? We went from residential count, we were looking at enrollment counts to residential now.
No, all of the projections were on residents. When we talk about kids impacted, we're talking about current kids, but when we're talking about these, these are residents.
I'm talking about this one here, where, where we've had enrollment.
Well, we look at both. Remember going back to the student data, we do look at current kids, but we also look at projected. So they, they change, that cohort going through is impacted by new kids coming in, new houses being built, because we're going all the way to 2033. That chart you just showed me with the cohort going through?
Yeah.
Those are residents.
Okay.
Yep.
Where did I see? Okay.
Yeah, the science of those projections does involve looking at trends with current students, combining it with future plots of land, future building, and birth rates, all of that mixed together, they do that analysis to come up with these numbers. So, but real students being impacted, and I know my mind always goes to current students as well, because we want to see the impact. This chart shows you with those projected zone changes, how many students would move from one school to a different school than they would have if we didn't change anything, if we didn't open Legacy and we didn't change anything. So Legacy, of course, is going to have the biggest impact. This is no different than when we opened Treasure Coast, was that the last high school, I think, to open, new high school? So Fort Pierce Central to Legacy, this top column here, 221 students would move from Central to Legacy. Centennial has the biggest impact, as I've said, with 623. Treasure Coast, 267, broken down by grade level, with, with no seniors. The other small areas that I showed you, Indian River Estates, that little area to the north in Centennial Zone, those few little areas, impact 97 students from Treasure Coast going to Centennial, 56 from Central going to Centennial, 246 from Port St. Lucie going to Central. Now, there's a decision point related to this coming up, but this is just... but this is just if all of them moved, based on those zones. And this represents a total of 1,500 students. One of the models we looked at, it was a total of 2,000 students. So we kept tweaking that to get to this point.
And I wanted to mention also, it's important for the board to take a look at the incoming ninth-grade column, because those students don't have a connection to a high school already. They're not currently enrolled at Centennial. They're not currently enrolled at Central. They're incoming freshmen. So, you know, whenever considerations were made, and I'll talk about a little bit more when Dr. Wild gets there, of the psychology of a student and the psychology of a parent. You know, because my instructions to our team was to have as little impact as possible while we also maintain the makeup, the current makeups of the schools, when I talk about the diversity of the schools. So as we looked at many of these plans, we tried to whittle it down and down and down for the number of students impacted. And I know Dr. Wild's going to talk about that in just a little bit, but I wanted that distinction to be made. Ninth graders aren't moving anywhere. They've never been assigned anywhere yet. It's just, we're changing their feeder pattern to go to Legacy, Centennial, Central, et cetera.
Right. Okay, good lead-in, because he just mentioned demographic breakdown. We also looked at the racial breakdown of the schools currently versus if we applied the new zone lines right now. And with that said, you would see very little difference. The bold is the first time a school is mentioned, it's in bold. That is with the new zone proposal. Underneath each one, you'll see their current demographics. So I wanted you to see it this way, so you could really do a real quick comparison. Does it drastically change the makeup of a school? And you will see very little change, considering the fact that we have to make changes in order to have enough room for all of our students where they should be going to school closest to their home. Very little impact. So I'll give you a minute to look at this, and you can see the district numbers are at the bottom of this slide.
And once again, just to reaffirm, you know, there is really no change in the makeup of the schools if we move forward with, with this proposal.
Are you looking for this slide, Mr. Ingersoll?
No, I'm looking for the last numbers slide.
This one?
So just in my mind, Fort Pierce Central grows by 20. Centennial goes down by 633, and that's the school that has, and that's the school that capacity is at 268, 2060, 81, but it's already at 2,669, so it goes down to 2,000 students.
So this is based on residents that might move in, so there is a decline. So we're trying to balance that, moving some kids out, making room for new kids to come in. So you'll see that, too.
I was more concerned about Central.
Right. Central doesn't go down by a lot. And the central, the central part of the county, it does not go down by a lot in this plan. The concern with the consultants is that Port St. Lucie High is going to experience future growth. We don't want to keep changing the high school lines, and their building is smaller. They don't have the same capacity as Central. And they, Central has been dealing with the larger number they have now. And then there's a future need for a future high school that would further relieve Central in the future.
We haven't gotten there yet.
Haven't gotten there yet.
This is if nothing changes. This is what's, what's going to happen.
I just was, why don't we increase Westwood?
So Westwood is going to go over their capacity.
That Central is already over their capacity.
They are, but they're going to be under where they are now, and they are still taking voluntary kids in, so they could stop that practice as well.
I see. Never mind.
One, one other thing, too, is we're, part of this exercise is to, is look at future growth. We don't want to be back here four or five years from now doing another rezoning initiative. You know, we, we're, it's kind of future casting where people are moving, where kids are going to go to school, and then also projecting out, you're going to see soon what we're going to be proposing with regards to future capacity and accommodating it.
And one of the reasons that we are extending this study, and I have a slide at the end, but what the slide says is that we're going to extend the study because even since we started it in October of '23, and they did all that pulling of all the data with the county and the city, like, that's the first phase of the project. Then they get into the rest of it, looking at our zones, looking at our demographics. Since we did that, there's been new permits pulled. There's been new developments approved. So we're going to do all that again. We're going to take a look to see what's changed since originally to now. Are all the projects that we considered, the building projects, still building at the rate that they expected to? Which we think they are, but we want to verify that. Then we want to compare the projections they had for this school year to what actually happens this school year. And they want to do that. The consultants that we have working with us, they want to see, did what we projected come to fruition? And if it didn't, what part of the formula needs to be tweaked? So, so it's really going to give us the ability to come back to you in, in the spring or in a few months and, and make changes to this. That's why this is all an original version. Also, there's, we're trying also to line the zones up to potential K-8 zones that we're going to come to you with. So although there is one section in the high school zone that might be a little questionable, and Mr. Ingersoll's honing in on it, it's, it's needed in the K-8 plan. So it is a K-12 system that we're trying to do with a phased-in plan. So, but those are excellent questions, and those are the same types of questions that we have worked through every single week to get to this product that we bring you today. An additional decision point is how we do the process. So sometimes when a district opens a new school, everybody zoned for that new school has to go. Grades nine through 11, you have to go. We could do that. We could do option two, which is assign all the ninth through 11th graders that are zoned, but give them the option to opt out if they're in 10th and 11th grade. No plan includes an opt-out for incoming ninth graders that haven't attached to a school yet, but for students already there. So that would be students that have already completed ninth or 10th grade there. We could offer them the option to remain at their school. They would have to sign an attendance agreement and provide their own transportation, because one of the hard reasons for doing this is to reduce transportation costs. So if they wanted to stay in a special, like, let's say, a career technical program or with a teacher they've bonded with, or with their friends, or on their athletic teams, they could do it if they agree to those things. Or option three, which is to allow that same option to stay at your, at your school for 11th graders only. And in an effort to ease this in and, and help make it a very positive experience for our community, Dr. Prince is planning on recommending option two. And this would be the same option that could apply to those students that would be moving from Centennial to Central, I mean, to Central, from Central to Centennial. They would get that same option, so if they wanted to stay. And this is all separate from controlled open enrollment or attractor programs or magnet programs. Those are different. So for example, anybody can go to Westwood. It's a magnet school with programs that they can go to. Port St. Lucie has an attractor program for the arts that anyone can go to. So those options are still there, and those are all also contingent on whether or not there's room. So that's where a school does have some control over their capacity. Also, Dr. Prince already mentioned, we are not coming today with a K-8 proposal. The K-8, the K-8 work has a lot of variables that we will be bringing forward to you. We want to bring it in a separate meeting with a separate timeline, because there, there are some needs in certain zones. In order to make smaller zones, we do have some seating capacity issues that we need to have further discussion with. So our plan, our recommendation is that we phase this in. With phase one being high school, it would have to be effective for August 2025, when the school opens. And a great time to announce that is November 2024, because we start the high school assignment process through the student assignment office shortly thereafter. And if we're going to do opting out, we do need time to do that so that students know their high school in time. Then phase two would be to create a separate implementation plan for K-8 students, our K-8 zone schools, in preparation for the new K-8 that we are currently building. So we have to have a zone for that school that sits in Western Grove, in the red zone. And then we have to have a zone for, a plan for all of our zone schools. So our plan would be to come back and ask you to decide how you want to implement the K through 8 proximity zone project. So I've mentioned future facility needs. As we look at this data and we...
Dr. Wild, before you go there, I'm sorry, can you go back two slides? I just want to touch on something real quick there. One more. Okay. So I, I think this is a real important consideration, and a lot of thought has gone into this, you know, with, with regards to the current makeup of the board and at least my history over the past 10 years. We have three board members that have been longtime board members and, and two board members that have been on the board for four years. I think I've kind of gotten to know each of you and what, you know, you think with regards to putting families as priority number one. You know, we don't want to disrupt households. We don't want to disrupt kids' lives. We want to have as limited of a, of a, of an impact on that as possible. When Dr. Wild was talking about looking at option two, it's something, you know, in a lot of districts, there's a lot of forced movement, and there is no option, no choice, especially for the high school kids. Many of these students, especially once they get into 10th grade, they, they do provide their own transportation. If they're happy in a school, they're doing great, they want to stay there. We do believe that, and I believe, this is what I think. Once again, it's, it's my recommendation to the board, and, you know, we can, we can talk privately after the meeting in the, in the coming weeks and months. But I do think this will be the least intrusive to our families, offering them the right to stay if they can provide for transportation. And ninth-grade students, I don't think we're going to have a lot. Most, you know, many kids that are, the vast majority of kids that are going to be assigned to Legacy will be excited about the prospect of going to the school as a, as a new student. My own child is impacted by this plan. She's a current student at Centennial High, and she will be zoned for Legacy. And I, quite frankly, as a parent, I would want the district to provide me the opportunity to keep her at Centennial if she has made her friends there, and she's very active in athletics and those kinds of things. So I just wanted the board to know that, that we've really tried to put our, put ourselves in our parents' shoes, and the recommendations that we have are trying to be as least impactful on our families as possible, with as many options as possible. Sorry, Dr. Wild.
Can I just, just, John, I, I agree with you 100%. And I just want to mention that, and I'm just here to remind you, I've brought it up before, option two is a no-brainer for me. Got to remember, I bring it back, because people forget, it hasn't been that long. We went through two years. These kids went through two years of COVID, traumatic thing. We don't need to put them through anything else traumatic. Those kids were in eighth and ninth grade. What they went through for two years was not a traditional education. We don't need to be moving them around. If you can do that, that's where I'm at. And I hope everybody hears me. I don't put the kids through anymore. They had enough. They've had enough of that. I think it's a great recommendation.
And, I mean, if any other, other board members want to chime in, you know, what your thoughts are. I mean, that's kind of why we're here. I just wanted to hear your thoughts about this as well, if, how you feel about it.
I'm with option two, but the only problem is, is when you have a freshman and a senior, and the freshman's already started, they're still going to expect transportation as a sophomore, junior. And I know, I know we're saying no, but we always get that letter, and someone on the board has, you know, gets a heart and wants to make it happen, and it just can't. And I know Michelle, Ms. Jerger is sitting there looking at me, and it happens. Board members, this is where you have to, there's all a line. That opt-out means they have to have their own transportation. And there has to be a line, because we can't afford to be driving buses for one or four or five kids.
And, and that's a good point, Mr. Ingersoll, because, you know, we've had this conversation. We, we spent $26 million on transportation, and we take in $12 million. This, this problem, unless we, we work to mitigate it, is only going to get much, much worse as our population grows. I do think this is a good compromise, that if families can get their child there, but we can't, you know, send a bus over to that neighborhood for two kids, because they want, you know, we just have to use common sense and a common sense approach. So I'm, I'm glad you made that point, Mr. Ingersoll.
We also, with option two, we always look for what is the least complexity as possible. We want to be able to explain things very clearly to our families. So we didn't want two different systems for Legacy and for those few students impacted by the other zone changes. And I say that I've, I've opened two new high schools, and there tends to be so much excitement with that, that most students are going to the new school. They want to go. They're excited to go. It's when you're already in a school, and I've, I've been a cobra, and now I have to go be an eagle, or vice versa, that's a little bit harder. So giving them the option there, and a lot of students are driving by that age anyway, quite frankly, high school, that it's a little less of an impactful decision.
So when we're, when we're talking about ratio or diversity, I see the different changes that will occur as a result of going to the proximity zones. When we're talking about them, could you go back over that to make it very clear to our audience, as well as to the board, how that will affect our schools? Because you know that we want to stay diverse, and we, we don't want to go into a segregation-type situation. Explain that to us.
Yes, sure. Thank you, Dr. Mills. Yes, and that's why we put this slide together, because the dark numbers, the numbers that are in bold, they were in the projection slide, and I wanted to put it right next to the current zone. So this is, if we took our current students and applied the new zoning lines, what would it do? And it does very little to change our demographics. And you're right, we are an extremely diverse district. If you look along the bottom, our county is 34.3% black, 34.5% Hispanic, 24.6% white, 5% multiracial. And this is based on FTE poll 2023, October 2023. So, so with that, if you look at these light-colored numbers, you can look how each of our schools are broken out by racial group currently. And then right above that number, you can see how much it changed. So if you look at, let's just stay with Fort Pierce Central, it's, I'm, I'm looking at the larger numbers. It is currently 29% black. These zone changes would make it 27.1, so a 1.1% change. Very minor change in the scheme of things. And if you look, you can see that across the board. The Hispanic population there is 40.2 now, and it would go down to 39.5, which is not even a percentage. So you can see that any school that you're interested in, you can take a look at those changes. Over here, I just illustrated the largest changes, which can show you that they're very small, even for the largest changes at any one school. So very little impact on the, the school's current diversity. And that gets much more complicated in the K-8 world and requires more changes. But in, in this, it's very clearly... But in, in this, it's very clearly not making a big impact. Dr. Prince?
And I also wanted to establish that, it's a great point, Dr. Mills, that, that you made, kind of sitting on this for a little bit. Because, you know, this is how we're going to move forward in the future with phase two and phase three. With our elementary schools, with our K eights. We want to make sure we have as little impact on our, on our current diversity. We're not going to create all this school or all that school. That is one thing that with my leadership team, we have, we have a lot of diversity within our own groups. But, you know, the, the result of all of this work, you know, four years from now is that our schools are going to look very similar they, they currently do. And that's a commitment that I have as well.
Good, okay. All right, so I talked about the options for how we do it. And how we will be bringing a recommendation to phase it in. I did talk to you about this, we, we want to schedule a future meeting to be able to go through a lot of details. What we need for facilities, go through all the K eight data and so forth. And get your input, get community input on a K eight plan. So what did we learn in terms of the growth in our district? We learned that in, we're looking at a 10-year period, we're looking out till 2033. That we know we need a second new K eight in the current red zone. We're building one now, we need another one. We need an expansion of an elementary school in the blue zone. The blue zone only has one K eight, Northport. And it has two middle schools, Southern Oaks and Southport. There are not enough middle school seats to be able to make any smaller configuration within the blue zone, make proximity zones. There's not enough middle school seats. So we looked at it every which way, with the lines every which way. And we just came to the conclusion there are not enough middle school seats. And we will show you all of that data at an upcoming workshop. It really deserves a separate conversation. So our recommendation there is to, the, the most cost-effective recommendation is to convert an existing elementary school in the blue zone into a K eight, much like we're doing at C A Moore. And the recommendation is Village Green, because that is the elementary school with the available property as compared to every other option in the zone. But we would definitely have all the numbers and the details at a separate workshop. We also are going to need the addition of Legacy's new building. And when I say their new building, you might remember in the blueprint for both Westwood and Legacy, there is a future building on the blueprint that we knew we could build when we need it. There's room for it, there's blueprints for it. We just were opting due to cost to hold off until we needed it. So we are going to show you when we need that and we'll go into more detail later. And eventually, we're going to need the construction of another high school. As Troy has been pointing out, there is going to be a need for another high school eventually. So right now, without the benefit of extending this data survey, this, this analysis that Davis MGT will be doing with us, this is our proposed timeline. And a lot hits around 2029. And that is the Legacy expansion, a new K eight. And I put on here Southern Grove because we do have property there and it is in the area, in the red zone. But that's, that's for much future discussion. And the Village Green expansion, all around the same time. The new high school, 2031, 2032, that could change with the new demographic study. And then the Westwood expansion, that is a little further out when that is needed. And that assumes that the students currently zoned for Westwood continue to take other options at the same rate. So a lot of them do pick Westwood or other options. If they started to stay at Westwood, that would, that would speed up the need for that, for that building. So there's a lot of variables that change these things, so this is just to get the conversation started and get you thinking about it.
Dr. Wall, can you go back to that one real quick? I just want to make a couple of points here. So this is coming up on us very quickly. I, I, I look in the mirror sometimes and I can't believe that I'm going to be, this will be my 10th year here. And, and my goal is to finish my career here with all of this finished by the time I walk out the door. That is my dream is to finish my career here. But I will say that, that comes at a cost. And, and that's, that's a challenge that we have because, you know, just like everybody has a budget based on your family income. You know, how much, you know, when you go to the bank, they tell you how much you can borrow. You know, as we have these construction projects, we get closer and closer to our debt ceiling. I did invite members of our bond council here today because they need to be informed of, of the challenges we have based on the projected growth that we have to keep up and make sure that we've got first-class facilities. And that we're able to, to, to borrow and pay for these as well. Now, we will have some debt come off as we accrue more. But we have, it's a great challenge to have, needing to expand this quickly. But we are going to need many of these projects in the coming seven or eight years. And I just wanted to make sure that I made a point to say that.
And before you go move on, with the Westwood expansion or just Westwood in general. When, when we go to proximity schools, am I understanding that the, after you leave middle school, let's say C A Moore, that you're going to then go to Westwood? Because it's in the proximity?
It depends on which school. So we haven't established the K through eight zones yet, so I really can't answer that yet. I mean, currently, they know when they're in eighth grade what high school they're zoned for.
No, I'm, I'm just using Westwood, I mean, C A Moore as an example. But if you're in the proximity, that's the high school for that, for the proximity? Or does the high school have different choices? Like if I'm in, I'm going to C A Moore, can I go to Fort Pierce Central?
Okay. So this high school proximity plan doesn't change the answer to your question. So the answer to your question is, based on your zip code, that determines your high school that you're zoned for. You still do have choices. But if you decide not to make a choice and you get assigned to your zone high school, that is based on your zip code. Currently and on this plan.
Okay, give me a zip code in, 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 in the C A Moore area. Or, or, or Lakewood Park area.
Okay.
What would the high school be that they would go to?
Okay, so if you live in 34946, you're going to go to Westwood.
Exactly.
Correct.
Exactly.
If you live in 34945?
You're going to go to that green zone, in the green zone.
Central, yes.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, that if you're in that proximity, if you're in whatever that zip code is, that's the school that you're going, you already know that because of, because it's a proximity.
You already know that you're zoned school, correct. You still have other choices though. You can still go to magnet schools, you can apply to Lincoln Park, you can do controlled open enrollment. You can do a curriculum transfer, a virtual school. There are still a lot of options, but every zip code does have a zone school. People want to know where they would go to high school, so yes. And then it allows for traditions and a neighborhood school as well.
Okay, so if I'm in, let's say, I don't know, F K Suite. I know that if I'm in that area in a proximity school, in the proximity thing that we were talking about. If I am at F K Suite, I already know what high school I'm going to end up at based on my zip code.
Based on current zoning, yes, yes.
So, no, based on this zone and the proximity zoning.
So either way, yes, you would.
Okay, so I will know what school that I'm going, but I have options like this option two? I can use that as an?
If this new, yes, if this new, if you're, well, option two is for existing high school students. If I'm already in high school and I happen to live in one of those areas where we're changing your high school zone school, we're giving you the option to stay if you're in 10th or 11th grade. That has nothing to do with elementary kids and what high school they're going to go to. Elementary kids and what high school they're going to go to will be determined by their zip code. Depending on where they are by the time they're in eighth grade, will tell us where they're zoned for high school. Some of them don't change, some of the zip codes don't change, like the one that I pulled out was at 349?
Can I just make a-
Did not change.
An observation. So right now, the way our high schools are zoned is already proximity zoned. Okay, they're already proximity zoned. So to, Mrs. Richardson, to, to your point, we're not really changing that.
That's what I'm trying to get to understand. I'm trying to understand that, if there are any changes, but apparently there are none.
Right, nothing changes right now. I think where we're going though, with elementary schools and K eights, whenever we share that plan with you, that, that will be where I think you're talking about with choices within those proximities. I think that's Mrs. Richardson's question.
Correct, that's correct. And the changes in this plan are just that some boundaries, some zip codes will go to a different school than they would have gone to because we're building Legacy, for example. So there's some kids that would have gone to Central, that'll now be going to Legacy. There's some kids that would have gone to Centennial, that'll now be going to Legacy. If they're currently in elementary school, that has to happen because we have to fill up Legacy. There are changes. But to Dr. Prince's answer, the high school process isn't changing. It's already in proximity zoning. And with that question or any others that you have, we would be happy to sit down and go through it in excruciating detail if you'd like. And we could have a consultant there, we could have. Excruciating is probably a harsh word, but it is pretty detailed. And we'd be happy to go through with anyone that would like to dig deeper. Yes?
You brought up Lincoln Park, you mentioned Lincoln Park. Under the proximity, I mean, currently at Lincoln Park, if someone is out of the zone of Lincoln Park, they can go on the bus will take them. But under the proximity, it would no longer be available unless the parent took them to school?
No, I'm glad you asked that question. This plan does not take away our magnet school process at all. So still, any student in any zone could apply to a magnet school.
And we're maintaining all of our transportation routes for our magnet programs. That's, that's why only five high schools are listed on there. Because there are five traditional high schools that, that, that applies to with regards to transportation proximity. Lincoln Park is a district-wide lottery school, all of our transportation routes are unchanged, doesn't matter. Doesn't fall under that rule, that's why it's not listed.
So we mentioned Lincoln Park for any magnet school?
Yes.
Yes, so Westwood is also a district-wide magnet, but it is also a zone school. So students would still get a bus if they were going to Westwood also as a magnet program.
Could make it simpler would be if we have, give me a list of the, the zoned schools, what are the options? And whether or not transportation is provided and why? You know, but so that we, because there are so many different variables, you know, for what we are talking about. That it gets a little confusing, am I going to this school? And what are my, you know, what can I use to, 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 as a reason for going to this school? Is it because it's a magnet school, is it because it's in my proximity? You know, I just, do we have something like that?
That would be on our student assignment website. First, we would put an explanation of, for high schools, let's talk high school. We would put an explanation of our zones. So we would have this, people can also go in and type their address and it tells them what school they're zoned for. So they don't even have to interpret this if they don't want to, they can do it that way. Under that, we have all those other options, the magnet schools. When can you apply for a magnet school with district-wide transportation? We also do events where we invite the students out to hear about it. So I see your point and absolutely we will continue that. Actually, we'll do a big push, a big push to educate because this has got some changes in it, it includes changes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Helen, if I, if I could, I was going to wait until the end, but two things happened here, you head up on the board, and I'm getting away from this because I, I have no problem. The staff, I think, has done a great job and this is where you have to go. But when I hear our superintendent say, we don't want to be back here in four, I certainly won't be back here in four or five years. But you don't want to be back here in four or five years doing this again. I, I'm afraid you're going to be back here in two or three years doing this again. And, and what I'm going to, and again, I'm here to remind you, and it's going to be the last time. I'm not going to talk about COVID or tell you about, about growth, but you all know this, but I'm going to tell you again because I think we're missing it. I'm under the impression, I, I'm told that we have over 62,000 platted lots already on the books to be built. Troy says there are 65, 66,000, that's the number he has, okay? I know in the back rooms and talking to elected officials that what's going on behind closed doors? There's more like 80,000 homes are going to be built. And the, the problem is, and I told you this before, but I'm going to remind you all, okay? Money talks, everything's about money, right? It's all about money, okay? Why is everybody moving to St. Lucie County? Because we have better-looking people, we have, cars are nicer, roads are nicer, that could be true. People are friendlier, could be. Water and sewer, I told you all this before. We're the only city of our size and counties going to it, not counties going to have more, I think. They're going to be going to water and sewer. As soon as this happened back just about 24, 25 years ago, every developer in Florida saw the opportunity here. And you saw that they saw it, we've all seen it, right? They're taking advantage of us, a lot of elected officials aren't going to like what I'm saying right now, they don't pay. You talked about cost, they have to pay, the, the impact fees are too little, but that's another, that's another thing. But I will remind you that no other city right now can do what we've done in St. Lucie County and the county. I give the county credit too. You can't have, G D C was 82,000 lots, you've all been here, Troy, you know that, Donna, you know that. 82,000 lots, all water, all water and they were just sewer and wells, very small, small industrial order. When we did that back in 201998, and it was before my time when they decided to do it. And they changed those, all of those. When we got the money from various sources to dig everything up, which nobody else can do now because it's just cost, they can't do it. Martin County can't do it, nobody can do it with, with the city did. When they did that, the money they, they got from the federal government, and I'm not going to go into it in a big time, or the state, said that if you annex anything in the city, it has to be under city water and city sewer. Developers loved it, guys. So we don't have to build houses on a half acre or a quarter acre, you can build them 10 feet apart. Now, you all went on the bus about a year ago, all of us. And you were one of them, I remember. My God, look at them, they're 10 feet apart, apartments everywhere, 10 feet. Because they don't have to, they, they have water and sewer. Developers love it, they just love it, they're going to keep coming here, they're not, you're not going to stop them. You're going to have to have a, an economic war or a cataclysmic event to stop them from coming. They're going to come more and more and more. On top of that, Mr. Superintendent, it's kind of your fault too. Next year, this year, Donna, we missed being an A by what, just a little bit? You guaranteed me next year we were going to be in a, we're going to be in A school district next year. More kids are going to come, even more, good and bad. But I think your, your numbers are way off, I think that you're going to be looking at, you're, you're looking at a new high school in eight or nine years, I think you're looking at a new high school in three to four years. And like you said before, and I'm not going to go into where I wanted the high school, once we vote on it, that's it for me. We don't have a presence in the Southern Groves, Western area, that's why you're doing the K through eight. You better get a high school there pretty quick and we better start thinking about it. And where's the money going to come from? You bring that up all the time, that's why you're superintendent. Folks, we're growing much faster than what those, those figures say. And I think, but you can only go by, and I'm not blaming anybody, Mr. O, Mr. Ollister, you can only go by what you have, what you've been told. But when Marty Sanders was leaving, I remember talking to him privately, he, he was kind of agreeing with me that it's going to be much harder than what, what you said. But if nothing cataclysmic happens, I think you're- But if nothing cataclysmic happens, I think you're at least twenty percent behind on the growth figures, that's all. That's the old white-haired guy talking, and I hope five years from now you say he was wrong, but I don't think I am.
In this extended study that we are beginning now, we do expect to see increases, so we do agree with you. It's part of why we were slowing down the K eight, to take a, a really close look, because two, several of you have said, we don't wanna do this more than once to students, we want to try to put in a plan that'll see us into the future. So for K eight, we wanna, we wanna really take it very, um, str- meticulously, strategically, and time it perfectly. So, we're not there yet, we wanna keep doing this work and bring it back to you.
But you're gonna be, and, and just to remind you again, here to remind you, Port St. Lucie alone, and, and the county's growing, too. Arguably is the second-largest city in Florida, am I right, Mr. O'Leary? Right, Jacksonville's the only city bigger, and what are we now, thirty, how many square miles are we, Mr. O'Leary? Just the city, just the city alone. Yeah, yeah, something like that, so it's, uh, there could be, there could be five, six hundred thousand people here in that ten-year period that you're talking about, so you're gonna build a high school a lot quicker. You and I had that conversation privately, I told you I was gonna bring it up. Here to remind you, water and sewer, nobody else has it, we do.
So we are on the last slide, and it is just wrapping up with next steps. And that is that we're gonna be making a recommendation for the new high school boundaries in the fall at a regular board meeting, along with, um, I believe option two, unless something changes, it'll be option two. We are also gonna schedule a, a session, a, another, um, work session on the K eight boundary presentation for the fall. We will bring updates to you when they complete the extended projection study. And then we'll need to come back to you with, um, some projections on construction timelines in more detail with costs associated, after the facilities department gets, um, completely involved and has those numbers available for you.
And I'd also like to, uh, you know, this was, I'm glad we're starting with the high school, because by far, it's, it's the most simple with regards to boundaries, because it's really not changing our philosophy at all. It's really about, you know, zip codes and, and location. Uh, I wanna thank Dr. Wild and Mr. O'Leary have done much of the work with regards to meeting with the various teams about this. I'd also like to invite, you know, board members, if they, if you wanna take a deeper dive, because it is incredibly complex. And there are another, a, a number of other options that I just felt the board would not be interested in, that would change the diversity of the schools, or would impact the, the fundamental makeup of some of our schools that, that ultimately I kind of pushed aside or rejected, but if any board member wants to see previous versions of the work, we're always happy to sit down with, uh, board members and, and kind of go into a deep dive. I'm sure Dr. Wa- Wild would love to revisit some of those earlier plans. But, uh, we've got some time, just wanted to, to make us available, uh, moving forward in the coming weeks, if you wanna sit down one-on-one and have a discussion with us. And that, I think, concludes Dr. Wild's presentation.
Yes, I just wanna publicly thank our consultants one more time, David Katz and Cameron from MGT Demographics, Davis Demographics. They have been fantastic to work with, the cadence of the work has, they, they never cancel, they meet with us every single week. Their productivity is awesome, and we look forward to bringing, um, more from their, their great work. They are not, they're listening on the call, they're listening, they are out of state today.
Great job, Helen, great job.
Yes, great job. Yeah, I really appreciate all the work that everyone's done. But, but again, I, I, since they are listening, I do have cons- uh, concerns about Central's capacity. And if we could move the border out to Header Canal, move Westwood's border out to Header Canal or Shin Road, and expand Westwood's area for future growth, I would feel a little bit better. Just listening to, to Kathy Townsend's interview the other day, um, there, there's a two-year, they're, they're putting a project in, and it's gonna go in two years, and it's not on the books yet. And I know it's west of I-95, and that's a thousand homes. And they're not gonna push something, they're not gonna build. So I start lis- listening to that, and I look at the, the, the zip code or the area, and that just expands Central further. So, I know it's coming.
May I, I, I wanted to interject, too, because I would encourage you, Troy, to go take a look at some of the previous iterations of our plans that may have included those areas. Once again, when you start messing around with different areas and neighborhoods, you start changing the, the current makeup of the school. And, and based on what I've heard from board members, we did not want to have significant changes in the current makeup of the school. So I just wanna.
I understand that, but when you talk about a capacity of a school that's over a thousand, and we've, we've alleviated the, the capacity on other schools, but we haven't done it on, on the, on the school that, number one, at the whole community drives by it and says, my God, what's going on at this school? I mean, everybody knows Central's at capacity. It doesn't make sense that we've changed the boundaries and don't change the capacity of the school. It doesn't make sense to me.
Well, the good news is, in seven years, they'll all be Central size, so.
And Central will be bigger, that's my concern.
It changed the boundaries and made room for the new homes coming in, and moved some kids to Legacy. That's, that's what they did, so that's why you didn't see the decline, a drastic decline.
I know, but that's my point, is we didn't do anything to Westwood. Except, and, and I know there's a, a development coming off on Industry Road, and that developer's giving us property, according to the commissioner.
Right.
But at the same time, it's not gonna be a high school that I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about the high school kids now and in the future.
You got it, Troy, you're right on, you gotta build a high school.
And just remember, Westwood is an academic, uh, is a magnet school as well, it is open to all students in the, in the county. And, and with the work that they're doing now, and the school grade increase and the new building, I expect more out-of-zone applicants to that magnet school as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, it was ve- it was very detailed and very clear. And you did an excellent job, not only this evening, but this morning, you did a very good job representing our district, thank you.
That was a fantastic morning, thank you all for being there.
All right, Dr. Wild, thank you for being there this morning for me, I kinda feel bad that I wasn't there now. Had a, once again, I wanna apologize, my intent was to be there this morning. My flight was delayed significantly yesterday, and I didn't get in until very, very late. My goal, actually, the only thing I wanted to make sure I was at was this meeting, right here, 'cause I was concerned so many flights in New York City got delayed yesterday. Chairwoman Holly, that is all of our content today. Once again, we're always happy to, uh, schedule meetings with individual board members. Uh, Mr. Ingersoll, if you wanna go through kind of some of the other iterations to see what we kinda thought about with regards to Central, because we did look at quite a few different options there. And for one reason or another, you know, during the process, we kind of rejected it, but I completely understand where you're coming from with regards to capacity and size, and, and, and Central isn't offloaded significantly. So, I get it, but that's all we have today.
I was hoping to hear something from you, Chairman, what, what your thoughts were, right?
Well, lifelong resident here, the, the growth that I have seen is, is phenomenal. And this team's ability to take all of the new growth, all of the new residents that have no history here, really. I mean, they're coming here totally new. But the offerings that they're able to have put together for incoming residents, it's, it's astounding to me. It really, really is, I'm fully supportive. I guess, one question, probably, Helen, before you sat down, I should've asked this, but is there a way to project if any individual families might be impacted to the point that they'd have a student at two different schools some point in the process?
Is there a way, I'm gonna say yes, because.
There always is.
They have heat maps with every single student, every single household, down to the, down to the student. And they do have all the student data behind it. I don't know what the request would look like to, to, to gather that data, but I do believe yes is the answer to, is it possible?
And I think probably as we do the K eight study, it would become even more possible, yeah.
Yes.
And that's, that's always what it comes down to, is the, an individual family being impacted by it. So as Mr. Ingersoll said earlier, we've got to adhere to the zones, the, to the zip codes. There has to be something that we can go back to and make it the same for everybody, but it's, um, amazing, the growth, so appreciate very much. I mean, I know that was a lot of work, and it's a, a very fluid process, too, as well, and will continue to be. So, just keep up the good work. You know, as long as we know that we're taking every consideration in to, for the best of our students, then I think we're on track.
And I also wanted to remind board members, I believe everybody's RSVP'd for the August fifth kickoff at CAS, which is gonna start at eight-thirty. We will have reserved seating, we have six or seven schools. We are using not just, in the past, if you remember, um, when we did this two years ago, we only used the downstairs area. We're using downstairs and upstairs, so it's gonna be a packed house. I think we're gonna have a celebratory atmosphere. We had a very, very successful year, some exciting news. As you're aware, you know, school grades were published after the state board meeting. We just, just had a super year, no D R F, um, traditional schools that we, uh, that we manage, and we've got a great message. Not only that, I also wanted to thank, before we wrap up the workshop, if, if you are part of our, um, negotiating team, would you stand for a second?
Yes, great job.
Yes. So, you know, I don't think sometimes when, when you're, you know, like you were saying, Ms. Holly, you were born and raised here. I've had the luxury of being in other districts and sometimes see the dysfunction that occurs between, uh, your bargaining partners and your district leadership. We do not, we are a unicorn, uh, for so many reasons in our state. Whenever I go to superintendent's conferences and I hear the stories, it takes, you know, over a year, two years to settle on a, a single contract. We have a great relationship with our bargaining, uh, partners, but also it's a tribute to our, the folks that are doing the bargaining. To be able to settle like that, there has to be a great level of trust between the parties to negotiate in good faith and have conversations that are open and transparent. And I can tell you, um, for the CWA, Dr. Sanchez does a masterful job with that group. And also, um, uh, Dr. Wild is our chief negotiator, and also primarily deals with Easle, just, just amazing work. So our employees are gonna get a pretty substantial raise. I know we've had executive sessions on it, it's not much different than what we talked about, but we, uh, expect those employees sometime in September to see that change in their checks. So, it's a great way to start the year, and, and that's gonna just be part of the message on August fifth, all the great things that are happening in St. Lucie County, especially with our public schools, so, thank you.
Great. Dr. Mills?
I wanted to also mention, um, the teacher's symposium today. I had the opportunity to sit in a class, in a training, and I went to a couple of them and just, the, we have such talent here. The, uh, the trainers were phenomenal. I mean, really, I mean, I was impressed, and I walked out and learned some stuff on how to management, manage a classroom, as well as our E S E program and so forth. It was phenomenal, the trainers. And I know years ago, we, we would bring in, um, different trainers, and we talked about using our own and finding our own gifted people within this district. And today, I witnessed them at their craft, they were extremely good. So thank you to, to all of you that, that take part in making sure that we have obtained this high B. And, um, and also now, now I may be wrong, but do we have, and you don't have to tell me what schools are, but do we have any C schools?
Yes, we have thir- twelve, I can't remember the, about eleven or twelve C schools. I think about seventy-five percent of our schools are A or Bs. And we've got some new schools that are Bs, Rivers Edge, um, Westgate is an A. Sam Gaines, very proud to say, they've earned their first A in their history, great story. And Parkway as well, earned an A, so just, just, I, and, and another thing, too, being in these schools my entire career, you know, when you're in a school that has a lot of challenges, we had three schools, um, that have a lot of challenges, and some of our best work was done at Dan McCarty, and St. Lucie Elementary, and Weatherby, and all of those schools were Cs. And they were, it wasn't even close, they, they had wonderful years. Whenever I say that, um, you know, we, we were not close on any schools where they were right above the line. All of our schools exceeded, uh, my expectations with regards to their performance, so it's just a fantastic year.
For the developers. It's good and bad with everything, we will be, didn't you tell me that, I, I don't, I'm gonna mention it, if Palm Point hadn't been in, we would've been an A district, was that close?
Not, not, under the old rules, the answer to that question is yes. Um, but the new rules, they raised the bar to be an A by, uh, two percent of the points. Dr. Summer has, uh, we know exactly what we need to do, uh, we have a plan, and, uh, we'll have Palm Point, that will count towards our district grade next year, which is only going to help us. And we've got a couple of areas that I think that, uh, we're gonna mobilize, just like we did with attendance last year. And I also think that that, actually, those nine hundred additional students coming to school every year was a big factor in the performance of our students, because we, uh, with regards to our learning gains, we were in the top, uh, top twenty out of sixty-seven districts. With our middle school acceleration, high school acceleration, and graduation rate, we were top ten. So we've, we've got, we're doing great work, we just have a couple of areas we're gonna fix to get the A. And, and believe me, um, when we do, I will celebrate like nobody's business.
Good, just build another high school for Troy and me, that's all, we want another high school. Donna said, you said we're gonna be number one next, we're gonna be A school, you promised me.
Yeah, we're gonna get there. Not that I'm gonna be doing the work.
Well, there's certainly a lot to celebrate already. We look forward to everybody being back next Monday and the big celebration kickoff there. But board members, just a reminder that we will adjourn this meeting and reconvene at five o'clock for the board, um, the budget hearing, so, right, though, we will move up. So, no other business before us now, we are adjourned.